Back from our break. Anne Latona, next item please.
Consent.
So for the public's information, the purpose of the consent agenda is to help the board handle routine matters efficiently so that the board can spend more time reviewing, monitoring, and discussing educational issues of the Wichita Public Schools. Students' academic success is the top priority for the Board of Education. Board members review these items in detail during the Agenda Review Workshop held at 10:30 a.m. on the Fridays prior to each regular board meeting at the AMAC Building. These workshops are open to the public, but no action is taken. They are for discussion and question purposes only, and your presence is always welcome at these. So with that, is there any consent agenda items that a board member would like to pull?
Madam President, I would not like to pull anything, but I do just want to thank the district for all attention to the fact that we're making such good progress on our secure entries at our school buildings with safety as one of our goals in our strategic plan.
Thank you.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
Motion.
I'm sorry. Motion to approve the consent.
Okay. Okay, motion made by Kathy and seconded by Julie. Okay, motion passes, seven zero. Latona, next item.
2025 Legislative Update, Capital Strategies.
Okay. Kelly?
I would invite Addie and Sean Miller. Most of you guys know Sean from being at board meetings before. He is with Capital Strategies and is our boots-on-the-ground in Topeka, and we invited him here tonight because our board meetings are awesome, and why wouldn't anyone want to, everyone would want to come to these? But Sean's here to give us an update on legislative session, and we'll pass it off.
Well, I was going to introduce our esteemed guest, but Superintendent Beilefeld beat me to the punch, so I'm going to turn it over to Sean Miller to give you guys an update.
Thank you, Addie. Madam Chair, I appreciate it. Thanks for having me here tonight. If I get a little too close or too far away from this, please just let me know. My name is Sean Miller. I'm the managing member of Capital Strategies. We're a contract lobby firm in Topeka. Very excited. I'm celebrating my 20th session in Kansas this year, so it's been a great deal of fun. We've represented Wichita 259 for a long time now. So I, most of you have heard me talk before, and so you may cut my microphone here in a minute, but I have 68 bills that we've been tracking for you guys. So if we talk about all of them, we'll still be here for breakfast in the morning, and I don't think any of us want that. What I am going to do is talk kind of high level a little bit about a few of the bills, maybe reference a couple of them, talk about the budget just a little bit, and then I am a Texan and a lawyer, and I can talk forever. So I'd rather just open it up and answer the questions that you have. I think that'll work better for all of us. And so I think maybe where we'll start just a little bit is we'll start with the budget. That's really the big ticket item, both literally and figuratively, and we have started a slightly different budget process this year than we've ever had before. So what Representative McCray Miller went through when she was in the legislature, we're doing a little different this year. We didn't start with the governor's budget, we started with a legislative budget, and we started there, and we compared the governor's budget to that later to see whether we needed to add or subtract. This is our infancy year for trying this. There's been a few hiccups. I think next, well, this fall for next session, we'll probably start it a month or two earlier. But we basically built a, you know, $15 billion budget over the course of three or four committee meetings in December and started with that as our base, and then we built up or subtracted from there. So it's been a bit of a learning process for all of us exactly how it's going to go. But I will say, and I'm very happy to say, that at the end of the day, the House is the only one that's passed a budget so far. They passed it before the end of February, first time that's happened in recent memory, and the Senate has begun to take up the budget now. And so that's where we're at at this point. The House passed Substitute for House Bill 2007, that's a number to hang on to for a little while if you want to, and in that bill, from the K-12 aspect, they passed what I would call constitutional full funding, right? It manages everything that was required by the Gannon Court plus the CPI, the inflation factor that was mandated by the court. That's what's in statute, and they have done that. Now, once you get beyond that, we get into a lot of little, I shouldn't call them rats and cats because they're really important pieces, but we get into a lot of other things from really sort of big-ticket items like special education funding down to CTE transportation and, you know, continued workforce training for teachers, those sorts of things. Those items, by and large, I would tell you, did not fare as well. They focused on full funding, they got that done, that is really critical. The State Board of Education had recommended an additional $72 to $75 million for special education, and they recommended that over the next three to four years to get us to that 92% of excess cost that's required by statute. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the K-12 Budget Committee recommended 30 million, so not the 72 that the State Board or the Governor had recommended, but 30 million. When that got to the Full Appropriations Committee, there was a motion made to cut that to zero, and then there was a substitute motion to instead cut that to 10 million. So there is 10 million in new special education funding in the bill this year. I put a small asterisk on that because last year in special ed, they funded about $75 million, and two and a half of that was leftover ARPA dollars, right? Our federal recovery dollars, and those were a one-time fund. So the 10 million this year, two and a half of that has gone into maintenance of effort to replace the two and a half in ARPA that we couldn't use this year. So it's really probably more like 7 and 1/2 million in new special education funding. These are kind of rough back-of-the-envelope numbers. We'll see what it plays out at the end of the year, but last year we were somewhere just under 75% of excess costs statewide. Statute calls for 92. At 10 million, which is really more like 7 and 1/2 million, I think we probably fall back into the upper 60s, something like 69.2, somewhere in that neighborhood of excess costs. Now, that impacts every district a little bit differently. We're getting runs from KSDE right now on exactly how much that costs, but that for a district the size of Wichita is in the tens and tens of millions of dollars in special ed funds that have to be transferred over from the local general fund, right? And we talk at the legislative level a lot about underfunding of special ed, and people think that, I think that means that special ed services are not being performed, and as we all know here, that's simply not true because those are federal requirements. So we have to fund those special education expenditures to fulfill those IEPs, and that's not an option. So what happens then is districts, and in different amounts, right, have to pull money from the general fund at the local level over to cover those special education costs. So that's really been a significant point of discussion this year. It was big in committee, some very impassioned pleas from a number of members, both Republicans and Democrats, to fund this, and we saw that again on the floor when the budget was debated. I bring all that up because today the Senate Education Committee got their first run-through with the budget. It was about 52 minutes. As one of the members said, so we had 52 minutes to dig into $6 billion. That seems like not enough time, and they're going to work that on Wednesday in the Senate Education Committee. So I assume you will hear some of those same discussions brought up again, right? What about special education? What are we going to do about special education? The budget is the one place where the committee can really, or excuse me, the committee is the one place where the budget can really be tweaked. They can add money to the budget if they choose to, because once it gets to the floor of either the House or the Senate, we are limited by what we call a pay-go rule, and that is if you're going to add money to the budget at that point, you cannot increase the total amount of the budget as it is, so you have to go steal it from somewhere else. And that always becomes a big point of contention. Everybody says, yes, we want to, we want to fund special education, but I want to go and get it from one place, and Addie doesn't like that, and she wants to go get it from someplace else, and I don't like that. And so you, it's really difficult to find a mix on the floor where everybody can agree, yes, that's overfunded, and we can go take $20 million from that to get us back to the $30 million recommendation that came out of committee. So I hope that makes sense. That's a little bit of the process that we, that we're going to go through over the next couple of days. We anticipate that the Senate will pass a full budget before they leave in March, probably sometime, we're probably looking at something the week of, early in the 24th, the week of March, and then March 28th, we reach what we call first adjournment, we take a 10-day break, and then we come back for just a couple of days, and we're going to be done-done for the year. So one of the other reasons I'm not going to talk about the 68 bills on here is because a lot of them are not what we would call exempt committee, exempt bills, and they did not meet the first turnaround deadline, so they can no longer be acted upon this year. Never say never, there's always a little Lazarus in there, we can go get something and stick it in an exempt bill later, but really at this point, we're down to just a handful of bills that I'd really like to talk to you about. And I'm not weighing in pro or con on them, just trying to kind of talk to you high level about what they do, and these are the, probably the bills that you will have heard about from either, you know, the United School Administrators or KESB or KNEA or something along those lines. And we'll kind of roughly do them in numerical order, but I'm just going to talk about two or three that are kind of unrelated, then we'll put them in the buckets after that. So Senate Bill 47 is one this year. It's, we've seen the likes of this before. It's not, it's a new number, but not a new idea, and it really deals almost entirely with the way local boards operate, from how items are put on the agenda to where board members have access to within the facility, all of those kinds of things. And so that bill came out of the Senate Education Committee. It, it passed, but it passed by the slimmest of majorities, right? 21 to 19, so literally the slimmest of majorities that it could be. It would allow any individual of any school board to put an item on the agenda. They could change the agenda. Basically, they could add one item each. So each one of you, if you wanted to, as you showed up today, could say, nope, I have one more item we want to talk about tonight, and I could add that item to the agenda. It also would prevent a school district from prohibiting any board member from having access to any school facility more or less at any time, and most, quite frankly, most school districts already, like, we've talked to a lot of them, it's like, hey, welcome on the board, here's your key, right? But we also have a number of places where we've had either really close elections or people who were elected who in fact had some legal difficulties, or there was something about that where they said, you know, perhaps we don't need you to have access everywhere all the time. And so it's, anyway, it's just a, it's a pretty wide-ranging bill about how boards would react. And typically what we see on these kinds of things, in Kansas, we are what I would consider a very strong local home-rule state, and we say, hey, we kind of know how to run our business, and our folks get to vote for us or against us if they don't like what we do, and so please, let's make sure we're doing what you want to do, but let's not micromanage us. And you're going to hear that kind of through a number of these bills tonight, and quite frankly, I say that because that's what people on the floor said, or in explanations of vote, that's what they said. None of these bills have been taken up or acted upon by the Senate, by the House, or by the opposite chamber at this point, just FYI. The other one, probably one that has garnered a lot of media attention, if nothing else, is Senate Bill 76. That is officially titled the Given Name Act. It's what we kind of colloquially call the pronouns bill, and it would actually prohibit any staff member, teacher, from referring to a student by a name that is not, by a pronoun or a name that is not match their biological sex on their birth certificate. It's kind of a strangely-written bill, that's the attorney-in-me, sorry, that comes out because the teacher is prohibited from doing it, but it doesn't say in the statute exactly what happens to the teacher if they violate that prohibition. It goes on further that if, essentially if a teacher or a student is being requested to refer to another student by a pronoun that they don't feel matches that student, that they can seek injunctive relief, and probably bigger to most schools, particularly a school of the size of Wichita, it allows for monetary damages, it allows that person to sue and seek attorney's fees, and so you could really see a really litigious set of actions come out of this. Again, I think a lot of school districts have policies on this already, one way or another. This bill did pass the Senate. It is headed over to the House. We've seen bills in this vein before. You don't get very far as a lobbyist speaking for the governor, but we've seen bills in this vein before get vetoed, and this bill, when it came out of the Senate, did not have what I would call a veto-proof majority, right? There was not 27 or more people that voted for it, so it's likely to get some, some action in the House, but we'll see ultimately where it goes at the end of the day. Wichita was sort of cutting edge on this one, but we saw a couple of bills that have been worked and heard, that's 2259, 2186, both of those are related to local boards being required to come up with e-communication policies, keep the kids off phones during the day as they're in the school, and so we've seen a few of those, not a lot of those have really moved now. I will talk really quickly about kind of something that may not seem to touch on schools very much, but this is what we've kind of dubbed the property tax session. The legislature ran in November on, we want to do something about property taxes, and so they feel now that they were elected, that they need to come forward and fulfill that mandate. The very difficult thing, as people who work at the city or county or school district level know, is the state has very little control over most of the property tax dollars. They control 20 mills for K-12 education, they control one and a half mills for educational building institutions, think Regents Universities-type buildings, and then most of your property tax is local, right? Fire districts, libraries, city, county, those sorts of things. And so they have really struggled with how to deal with that, quite frankly. They're looking at eliminating the one and a half mills for educational building, blows a pretty big hole in the budget, and for the average person, it saves them, you know, $20 on their property tax bill. It's not a big number, but it's a pretty big hit to the district as a whole, or the state as a whole. We have also looked at House Bill 2011 has been passed. This one deals directly with the 20 mills for schools. My antenna always goes up when we hear that because in theory, it's okay, take the 20 mills down to 18 mills, but we want to make sure that schools are still constitutionally funded, so we need to find a way, if that's not coming from property tax dollars, to backfill those dollars with state general fund or something else. So 2011 did pass out a committee, it cut us from 20 mills to 18 and 1/2 mills, but it does have that automatic trigger that would backfill school funding from the state general fund, and that's a really critical piece for us. The other things really that we would look at this year that are kind of, I know have been on your radar, capers is always a really huge issue. How do we attract and retain staff, teachers? There've been a couple of bills this year that have been focused on teachers that would move teachers from capers three to capers two. It would not address other staff within the agencies. I do not sense, even though there's a great desire to do something to fix capers, that we have a solution in place where they're actually going to take action on something on capers this year. So we'll probably continue to see some interim discussion and interim study on those types of things. And then the other one that doesn't probably seem to touch schools too much is, but probably does, is immigration-related issues, particularly given the discussions that we're having at the federal level. We have a couple of bills that have been heard that would essentially prevent anyone with an illegal immigration status, with a, with a non-legal immigration status, from receiving any state or local benefits. It's pretty broadly defined, not really sure what that means, and there's a lot of discussion about that. If a student comes to school and is educated and that's paid for by local property tax dollars, is that a public benefit? And so could any student who doesn't have a legal immigration status be prevented from coming to school? That's kind of probably the extreme of that. I think most folks in Topeka, Washington DC, wherever, tend to think about benefits in terms of welfare benefits, SNAP, TANF, food benefits, those kinds of things. That one got a little attention last week as well because we had a pretty controversial hearing. It kind of blew up, the chairman ended the meeting and cleared the room because people were speaking beyond their time and sort of casting, oh, well, I guess, calling the committee sort of racist and bigoted and those kinds of things, and so they cleared, they cleared the entire room. It's unclear whether they'll actually work that bill or not, but those are the kinds of things that tend to be showing my age when I say above the fold in the newspaper. I think mostly now it would be like a really high hyperlink on the page, but, but that's sort of what we deal with there. The, the last two bills that I'll talk about are perhaps the most controversial. They're also not new ideas, but they are, they deal with tax credits, vouchers, whatever word you want to use for them, and Senate Bill 87 would expand the existing low-income scholarship tax credit. Currently, that's set at 250% of the federal poverty level. I could contribute to one of these scholarship-granting organizations. I could get a 75% tax credit on my taxes, and then those organizations grant out scholarships to students who are at or below 250% of federal poverty level to attend a non-public school. That has been in place for a few years now. There's been some uptake, but not a tremendous amount. They put a cap on it when they first passed it, we've never gotten to that cap, but this one seeks to expand those caps and also expand the amount of money that someone could donate to a scholarship-granting organization, but perhaps most fundamentally different, it changes the eligibility to receive a scholarship. So it would no longer, the 250% FPL would still be in place for a generic student, but if you're a student of a military veteran or a police officer, a firefighter, or an emergency responder, EMS, then you would automatically be eligible for the scholarship. There would be no FPL. So you could be a police officer who is the sole breadwinner in the family and get that scholarship, you'd probably be pretty close to that 250%, or the example that gets tossed out all the time is you could be a firefighter who's married to a doctor, and you're way above the FPL, and you would still be qualified for that. So that has passed the Senate. It's sitting in the House right now. They had a hearing on a similar bill in the House. I assume they will take it up as well. The other bill that I want to mention, and it's the last one, I promise, is Senate Bill 75, and that, that is much more like what you would see as an educational opportunity credit in other states where they have enacted more of sort of an active voucher-type program, a money-follow-the-student-type program. That bill was worked in the Senate Education Committee, it passed out. It did not make it above the line, so it didn't meet the turnaround deadline, but it was blessed. So it is exempt, it's still alive, it's kind of sitting there. We don't know if it'll be acted upon or not, but it could be at any moment if they choose to. So that, I think that's sort of where we're at right now. Rather than going way down the rabbit hole on some of these other things, I'll talk about whatever it is that you guys would really like to hear.
Before you move on, the last one you just mentioned, would you talk about the price tag of that?
Yeah, so the price tag on it right now, we can look at it in a couple of ways. We can look at it with the existing cap, so we've got caps on it right now that we cap it at $25 million, so that's a pretty small one. What we have seen in other states and what we've seen in the low-opportunity tax scholarship program is those caps tend to kind of grow or be taken off at some point. Oklahoma, if you want to just do a little Googling on it, recently enacted one, they had 31,000 students apply the first day. Arizona did it and thought it would be, you know, 20, 30 million, and it hit them for about 125 million in the first year. So a lot of what you hear and concerns about this from legislators is really just what is the price tag going to be, and how do we, if we can't afford but $7.5 to $10 million for special education, what if we pull another $100 million out of the system, right? What is that going to do to special ed, or what is that going to do to constitutional funding? So that's kind of the debate that you hear back and forth on those things, and that's not a Kansas-centric thing. Texas is going through the same thing right now, a lot of, a lot of press on those as well, but yeah, so the price tag theoretically could get pretty high pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you. Melody?
First of all, thank you for the overview. Probably three questions. What's the surplus that we're holding, that we're carrying now as a state?
Thank you. It is roughly $3 billion right now.
$3 billion.
And that, that is the combined state ending balance and the rainy day fund, so that's together.
Okay. Then, when you stated that some were wondering how much they could afford, all right, what's the additional conversation around that? I mean, period, with a $3 billion surplus?
Happy to try to tackle it without putting motives in anybody's head, right?
You know that's where I'm going.
I, I kind of thought perhaps, you and I have worked together for a long time, so what essentially we're doing right now is we typically, for those of you who haven't been involved in legislative process, we do consensus revenue estimates, and we really look out about 24 to 36 months. That's, that's way out for us because we have to post a budget every year, and whatever budget we pass this year only survives to next year, next year's legislature can change it. And so we tend to look at things in pretty short stretches of maybe two years. They asked for this last fall and got some runs that went out five to six years. We have, the last several years, overspent revenues by 400 to 600 million. And so they looked at a run that said if we continue to do that, that by the year 2028, we're slightly in the red, and by the year 2029, we are significantly in the red, to the tune of about 600 to 800 million. And unlike the federal government, we are not constitutionally allowed to deficit spend. The one thing the legislature has to do every year is pass a balanced budget. We have to have at least $1 in the bank at the end of the year, and by law, we're supposed to have 7 and 1/2% ending balance. So that's really what it was that they began to look at. If we do not make some fundamental changes in 2028, 2029, we're going to be in a position where we may have to do significant allotments, big cuts. Many of us remember 2014 through 2016, we had to do a lot of those. The legislature left thinking they had passed a balanced budget, and then revenues continued to come in under, 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 and Governor Brownback had to make allotments across the board, it was required. It wasn't his choice, he did not enjoy it. It was not a very fun time, I would say, for most of the legislators because they had to make significant and difficult decisions.
So was that one of the reasonings behind them cutting 165 million from the governor's budget? Do you know? Did they give a reason why they?
They, they didn't really, and you have to remember, they didn't really work the governor's budget this year, they started with their own, so.
It was presented.
Correct. It was that much lower. There are areas of the budget that are higher than hers, right? Where they chose to invest more, there are areas where they did not. Partially, we're getting into non-educational issues here a little bit, but partially, the way her budget is built, she included Medicaid expansion in her budget, that draws down a significant amount of enhanced federal match dollars, and by choosing to not expand, they had to take a 90-10 match for certain healthcare services and reduce that essentially to a 60-40 match. So where we would have been paying 10%, we had to pay 40. And so it's kind of odd in that kind of removing that changes the budget profile quite a bit as well. So you have just one or two of those things in there, and it can, it can move things around pretty, pretty significantly.
So first of all, could the board have, will we receive a copy of the?
I'm happy to share it. You don't want this copy because it's got my hand scratch all over it.
Email. Yeah, so if you email it.
I'm happy to get that by email tomorrow so they can share it.
That would be great. Last, so conference committees or floor action, what do you think might happen? What's, what's the conversation particularly around special education funding?
The special education funding discussion, as I mentioned earlier, is an emotional one. There's a lot of bipartisan support to increase it. I think the question is how and why, and there is a bit of a disagreement at the legislative level about how things are being counted and what excess costs really look like. Representative Kristi Williams is the vice chair of the Appropriations Committee, and she has requested from the Department of Education, I think, a couple of different formulation runs on excess costs because I think she wants to get a better look at those and feel, it's, it's, it's a bit of a strange calculation, right? Because our state statute requires us to fund 92% of excess costs at the state level, not district by district. We don't look at 259 or 500 or 501 and say, what's your number? We're going to fund 92%. And so theoretically, that means you could be underfunding some schools, overfunding some schools, and depending on which formula you choose to run, you can kind of show data that shows that. And so she's requested a couple of runs on that. I cannot tell you whether that means that she gets those runs, or, and I say she, the whole committee is going to get those runs, and they say, okay, everything looks great, we'll increase it perhaps in conference committee, or we see there's some disparity here and we need to talk about it during the rest of the year, and then we'll figure out where we are. I think it is difficult, at the point we're at in the session, to add significant additional funding to special ed.
Okay.
I'm not going to tell you, I don't think that there's not going to be an effort and that there might not be some added, but I, I think it's a very difficult conversation to have. The other thing that we have to keep in mind on special education funding is that because it's a federal requirement, we run into maintenance of effort issues. So we can't add $50 million this year and then decide next year we don't have it and we pull it back out, right? We're now locked in, we have to maintain that state level of funding in that particular bucket. So it's not simply that we can, we really like transportation, and this was a rough winter, so next year we're going to add more money for transportation, and the following year we pull it out. We sort of lock ourselves into that discussion when we add money to special education. I think that's part of the reason that they're a little bit reticent to add money at this point.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Okay, Kelly?
Last thing I would say, and this is more of kind of a philosophical, big-picture opinion maybe, I don't know, but I think it's important to reiterate based on, you know, Katie's comments that she made earlier, and that and that process that's going on, along with some of the, especially the, the one bill specific, SB forty-one, specific to school boards. We have mechanisms in place for our community to notify us if there's concerns going on in our buildings. We already have that in place. And I think, I'm thinking of, I think every single one of you has gotten in touch with me about some sort of issue or question or something that's come up, and we address it, and we, we look into it, and sometimes the information's a little off, but sometimes there is a significant issue there. We don't need a higher level of government to solve that for us, right? We, you guys do a good job of governing. So I think to, sometimes we're trying to solve problems that maybe, maybe are, maybe aren't real for our community, maybe are real for other communities. But I think that's, that's a stance that I, I hope our community knows. We don't need a special portal at the federal government level for people to let us know when they're concerned about something. We, we, they let us know. They let us know, right? We already have, we already have those mechanisms in place for people to let us know how we can do better. And we're always trying to work with parents and do better. So I guess I just wanted to put that out there in kind of a, a big-picture view that I feel like we are very responsive to the community. We do have a lot of openness and transparency, and so other, other places may not. I'm not aware of what other places do, but I think it's an important part of the conversation. So I just wanted to mention it.
Yeah, I would agree. I think when the board receives emails and comments, especially concerns with anything that might be going on in the schools, they, they are addressed. They are quickly addressed. So our emails are public. They're published on our website. And so people are, people know how to get ahold of us, and they do, and we do follow up with those emails. So we try to be very, very quick to respond on those kind of things. So thank you for bringing that up. Any further questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Thank you guys very much. Thank you, Sean, for what you do up in Topeka for us, and keeping us updated, and we'll look forward to your email tomorrow to us. So thank you very much. So with that, Latona?
Budget report.
Okay, Addie?
I am just gonna stay up here, because you guys get me two times this evening. So I have, oh, I think I need to start this slideshow, sorry. So I'm here this evening to give a budget report for the board, a few objectives I have for this evening, and buckle in, everybody, because we have quite an agenda. He was so excited after his awesome legislative update. He wanted to hear all about the excitement of our budget, so I understand. So tonight, I'd like to discuss a, a proposed budget timeline for all the touchpoints that will interact together as we work through the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Holy cow, can you believe we're there? I also want to give an overarching view of the board's responsibilities in building our budget. It's a huge billion-dollar budget. It can't be done by one person. It can't be done by seven people. We have a huge amount of staff that support that year-long process, and so giving you guys a better feel for where we interact and where your input in the budget comes in is part of our agenda this evening. I, I think Sean's presentation is an excellent segue into giving you some estimates for what we believe fiscal year twenty-six might look like in terms of revenues for us. We're gonna do a quick follow-up from presentations from almost a year ago of where we're at with resolving that forty-two million dollar budget deficit for this fiscal year, and then talk about next steps for funding our needs in the district. So we're at the very start of our process. Today marks our first touchpoint for officially starting to, to go through the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Tonight, we're gonna go through revenue, revenue estimates. We have a very tight proposed schedule, and I'll be touching base with you almost every month in our upcoming board meetings to, to keep the train moving on the train tracks. So we'll start tonight with some revenue estimates, and our ultimate goal is really around August, posting our notice of hearing, which publishes our proposed mill levies and fund, legal maximums for our fund balances, a budget hearing, and a budget adoption. So those are our major goals in our timeline. And so I mentioned this earlier, our budget is huge. I have a division of people that are dedicated to planning and monitoring the district's nearly-billion-dollar budget. But you all integrate with this very important process essentially by establishing priorities through strategic planning, essentially giving us those pipelines for where we should look to invest our budget so we can gain outcomes and, and meet those, those goals that you all have set for us in the strategic plan. Over the last three years or so, we've incorporated a pretty comprehensive and formalized building-needs-assessment process into the, the budget timeline. And so the, the district's Board of Education is charged with reviewing state assessment data, reviewing building-needs-assessments that are completed by buildings, site councils, building-leadership teams, et cetera, and then proposing an estimated timeline for all students to achieve proficiency on state assessments. And so we'll do that along this budget process. And then additionally, our main goals really are to establish those local property tax mill levies and to adopt legal maximum fund balances. So those are our major goals as we start to work through this timeline and the work we're gonna do together. So before I jump into the, the fund numbers, incorporating some of the changes in legislation that Sean spoke to us about this evening, I've become aware that there's been some misinformation that's come up about some factors that contribute significantly to our budget planning, and I'd like to address some of those things with you this evening. And that way, I can give the board some accurate information as we head into our budget-planning season for you, for you to think about. So one very important factor that we take into consideration when we're planning a budget is all of the competing pressures that we have on capital outlay. Capital outlay is charged to do many things and support many initiatives in our district. This fiscal year, we, the, the main revenue streams in capital outlay are local property taxes, motor vehicle taxes, and an equalization state aid in capital outlay. This fiscal year, we budgeted about fifty-point-two million dollars for those items. I'm leaving miscellaneous income out of that total of consistent revenue streams, because that is mostly made up of interest income. That number, three years ago, was four hundred thousand dollars. The district is doing excellent on taking advantage of current market interest rates. Interest rates are a roller coaster. We will not have that income stream forever. It's not something that we can rely on to fund our long-term facilities' needs. So when we're thinking ahead and three to five years out of what capital outlay is gonna look like, that's a factor that we kind of have to leave out. It's not something that we anticipate to stay at the levels that it's currently at forever. A lot of people, when we say capital outlay, think of just facilities' maintenance work. Capital outlay in our district supports a huge number initiatives, of initiatives, and I've listed some of them here for you this evening. So facilities, maintenance, and upgrades, this is a number that district administration has been quoting. On average, year-over-year is about twenty million dollars. Those are for kind of planned projects, bigger projects essentially that our buildings really need. You have your repairs and preventative maintenance. These are things that are actually broken. Repairs are things that are actually broken that need fixing. And then a small amount of preventative maintenance to keep the things that aren't breaking yet from breaking in the future. School safety, district-wide software, student and staff hardware, furniture and equipment replacements, fleet vehicles, CTE technology and equipment, and uniforms are all examples of things in addition to our facilities that have to come out of that capital outlay budget. So huge pressures on our capital outlay fund to support all of the initiatives that we have in this district. So when we think about our income streams and the money we have to support these initiatives, we also have to start to take into account some pressures coming at us with some of our aging infrastructure. You all, on consent this evening, approved some large-dollar items in support of both an initiative established by the board through the office-restricted access, school safety initiative. But we also have a tremendous amount of work that's taking place on some of our beloved high schools. For East High and North High, we're at nearly forty, almost over forty million dollars over the last two or three years in investments in just two of our buildings. And this is something we have to take into account when we're collecting revenue in capital outlay. We can't spend it all on that year's broken things. We have to plan for large, major facilities, structural issues, large things that are breaking. And that number of things that could break grows year-over-year. You guys have heard that as deferred maintenance, right? Deferred maintenance is not the things that need to be done today. It's the things that are just, we need to potentially plan for them to break in the future. And that number, we reported last year, was one-point-two billion dollars. That number grows every single year. And so some of our capital outlay funds, we have to reserve for things like the North and East High projects. And those have been significant for us, to the tune of forty million dollars. So I want to go through just an example of a scenario in looking at where our cash balance is in capital right now. And we did have a large cash balance. Eighty-four million dollars is a big number. For the size of our budget and the size of our building portfolio, it's not. But eighty-four million dollars sounds like a very large number. So we started this fiscal year at eighty-four million dollars. If we go back to those consistent revenue streams that we know we're gonna get, property taxes, motor vehicle, and state aid, we're adding about fifty million, fifty-point-two million dollars to what we have available to spend. If we look at our spending on average over the last two fiscal years, we're spending over eighty million dollars a year on facilities' needs. And we've been told by experts, that's not enough. We'd have to spend over a hundred and fifty million dollars a year to catch us up over a ten-to-twenty-year period. So eighty million dollars is still not enough to get us where we need to be to overcome some of our deficits and our facilities' needs. But if we continue on this trajectory, start at eighty-four million, add in fifty, take away eighty, by the end of this fiscal year, capital outlay goes down to fifty-four million dollars. That's okay. If we take it forward one more year, assuming the same revenue assumptions, that fifty-point-two million dollars, and still spending that average of eighty million dollars, by the end of next fiscal year, eighteen months, less than eighteen months, capital outlay is at twenty-four million dollars. Sitting in this seat, I would never recommend taking capital outlay cash down that low. That is not enough to get us through the six to seven months of the year where we have no money coming in. So in eighteen months, with our spending where it is, assuming these assumptions, capital, the, the restraints on capital and the pressure on capital are very, very great. You take it out just two, a total of two fiscal years, and we're in the hole in capital outlay. We're not going to let this happen. This is not how we'll operate, right? But it does mean that we'll have to make decisions. We will either have to reduce our spending out of capital outlay, so reduce the amount that we're contributing towards our facilities' needs out of capital, or look to our general fund budget, which is taking away from our instructional initiatives to support our facilities' needs. Those are our two options for supporting capital outlay. Okay. So the second topic I've heard a bit about is our cash balances. Wichita Public Schools at July first of twenty-twenty-four had an unencumbered cash balance of three-hundred-and-forty-eight million dollars. Again, sounds like a very large number. So we're gonna get into the weeds a little bit of what that's made of. And so our Government Finance Officers of America kind of sets the standards for how we classify our cash. And so we've got three major categories: capital and bond, special revenue, and other. So of that three-hundred-and-forty-eight million dollars, capital and bond and interest make up forty-eight percent, over a hundred-and-sixty-seven million dollars. That means we can't use that money for anything else other than facilities' needs, which we have many, 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 many plans for and needs for, and bond and interest, which is already set aside for future debt payments, future obligations that we have to pay. And that's forty-eight percent of our cash balance. Special revenue is those highly restricted funds that see, receive revenue from state, local, federal governments that are restricted by purpose, meaning, I'll give you an example, special education, great example. Money we get for sped has to be spent on special education. We cannot use that for funding facilities' needs. We cannot use it to go and fund general reg ed teachers. It has to be used on special education students. So a hundred and nine million, over a hundred and nine million, thirty-one percent of that cash balance is funds that are, they're where they are, and we cannot spend them on anything other than where they are specified in that fund. So our other is about seventy-one million, which is twenty-one percent. Thirty million dollars of this, I'm kind of moving over to that stacked bar chart to the side. Thirty million dollars of that is budgeted to be spent this fiscal year. It's budgeted in the budget you all adopted in September to spend this year. We only have forty-one million dollars, or twelve percent of this cash balance, set aside in what, in what's called contingency reserve. This is a rainy day fund, if you want to call it that, essentially set aside for emergencies. Forty-one million dollars for a school district the size of Wichita Public Schools. That's six-point-nine percent of our operating budget. It is eight to ten operating days. If you think about a best practice in your personal life, best practice is three to six months of a rainy day fund. We have eight to ten days in a, in a contingency reserve fund. And that is the, about one state aid payment. So if the state were to be late or miss a state aid payment because they're short on revenues, you know, we've heard times where that's happened, right? Where the state has been short on revenues, that is one state aid payment for Wichita Public Schools. So in total, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars of that three-hundred-and-forty-eight, almost eighty percent of that fund balance, we cannot use for anything other than where it's at. And we have plans for it. Capital outlay has plans. Bond and interest has a very specific debt schedule that we have to make. Everything is either budgeted or planned for on a, you know, three, five, seven, ten-year basis, so. When, real quickly, when we look at where Wichita Public Schools' cash balances are in comparison to other school districts in the state, and this is just some of the largest school districts, we're right in the middle of the pack. We don't have the most. We don't have the least. We have the most in terms of dollar figure, because our budget is almost double in size to the next district in comparison. We have a very large budget. But we're, we're right in the middle of the pack. There are a hundred-one-and-one school districts in the state of Kansas that have a higher percentage of cash on hand than we do. So not the highest, not the lowest, right in the middle of the pack. And this is, we have about eighty million dollars in our bond and interest fund right now, which, which it makes up a large portion of that kind of restricted cash. And this is why we still have two-hundred-and-thirteen million dollars of scheduled debt payments to make. We cannot collect that overnight. So we have to slowly accumulate cash over the lifespan of a bond issue, so we can make the principal payments at the end of the bond. And so we do accumulate cash. Because we are approaching the end of the bond and interest cycle for some series for the two thousand and eight bond issue, we're sitting on cash because we have upcoming principal payments we have to make. And we could not collect that overnight from constituents, from property taxes, so. A third thing I would like to address this evening is just oversight and regulatory bodies that we're subject to in terms of deciding who, what, when, where, how, why we can spend our money. So I've listed some of the opportunities where we have independent agents coming in from external organizations who review our, our, all of our spending. And when I say all of our spending, I mean our line item detail, millions and millions of records of detail that are being audited and reviewed and tested. And when I say I can come to you this evening with accurate figures, that is not because Addie Lowell, Chief Financial Officer, said they're accurate. It is because highly qualified organizations who have established best practices for thirty-two years in a row have deemed that our financial statements are transparent and are materially and accurately presented. They gave us that designation. And we've had many, many auditors review that and, and say the same thing. So when we say our numbers are the source of truth and the source of accuracy, it is because we have earned that designation, and, and many groups have worked to, to contribute to that. So these are just the external bodies. I, we file so many reports. I think every single person has, you know, our financial records. They're on, they're online for anyone to view. Our checkbook goes online every single month. We file so many reports on our spending. So many organizations see our data and validate it on our behalf, so. Not to mention, we have several oversight bodies that give us rules to follow as well for what we can spend money on, and, and why, and how, and all those things. This is just the tip of the iceberg on the, the major organizations that we work with. We could go on for days on the regulatory bodies that we work with on a consistent basis. We could go on for days on the regulatory bodies that we work with on a consistent basis to, to help us make all these decisions and deploy funds in our budget. Okay, this was a lot of information. So our major takeaways for just addressing some of these factors that impact our budget planning, our pressures on capital outlay are high and they're not going to stop coming. Without more revenue streams, we will either have to cut capital expenditures or we will be using general fund budgets to support facilities needs. The district has cash mostly in restricted funds to fund, fund long-term obligations and immediate needs. The district is highly regulated and audited. And all of these factors greatly impact our budget planning. So with that, I'll jump into some fun numbers. Some, I, I want to go over with you this evening our enrollment audit results and how those translate into budget estimates for fiscal year twenty-six. So we're going to go slowly on this PowerPoint. So if you'd like to watch the screens, it might be helpful so that way I don't overwhelm you with too much data in a table. And so right now, our fiscal year twenty-five budget was based on a one-year piece of legislation that essentially allows us right now to take the average of fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-three's audit and enrollment. So we get to combine those numbers together to get kind of that above the line, I'll also say, adjusted FTE total. So we know what that's going to be. We already, considering we're a district in declining enrollment, we always want to look back to get the highest figure to base our budget on. So we already knew what this figure was going to be. It was forty-three to sixty-nine point eight. And so even through audit, we knew that this number was going to hold. When we filed our budget, we considered all of our weighted funds, pre-K, special education, transportation, CTE, et cetera, to get those extra weighted FTE that we qualify for. And that number was thirty-nine thousand sixty point four. So our budget was based on eighty-two, three thirty point two FTE. We multiply that by our base state aid amount. Our general fund budget before virtual was four hundred and forty-two million dollars. We add in virtual. Our legal maximum for our general fund that we published this year as our budget was four hundred and forty-six point six million dollars. How did we audit out? Our waitings went from just over thirty-nine thousand to thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-two. That was a decrease of four hundred and eighteen FTE for waitings. So if we look at what that gets us with the base state aid per pupil of fifty-three seventy-eight, our general fund budget before virtual is four hundred and forty point five. Virtual also takes prior year adjustments and gets audited as well. Their base figure is just different than the rest of the base state aid. And so in total, our new legal maximum for our general fund budget is four hundred and forty-three point four million dollars. From what we budgeted to what we audited out to, we lost three point two million dollars. We anticipate that. Our average audit adjustment is three to four million dollars every single year. Another excellent reason to keep some cash on hand because if we don't have any cash on hand, we're cutting people's budgets in the current year. So if we have cash on hand, we don't have to cut our budgets, right? So that, that three point two is where we ended up through audit. So now if we take those audited figures that we just went over and plop those in for a starting point for what we think will happen in fiscal year twenty-six, we know, based on our fiscal year twenty-five audited FTE, what that above the line adjusted FTE total is going to be. That number audited as forty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-one point seven. So we're losing three hundred and seventy-eight point one FTE, just, just as that ba, that base enrollment figure. Our waitings, we're estimating right now, and this, a little bit of this comes into play with what Sean spoke to us about this evening with special education funding, some additional, that ten million dollars that's going into the special education formula, as well as some changes we're anticipating on sped transportation. We anticipate a little bit of a bump in waitings to seven eighty-four point two. So a little bit of an increase over our audited figures for next year in the budget, four hundred and six FTE in our, our total weighted FTE. That kind of combats the loss from the audit a bit, not quite all the way, but almost all the way. So anticipating a little bump in waitings. Right now, the proposed base state aid per pupil amount is fifty-six eleven. It's still early. Sean mentioned hopeful that we might have consensus on this number by the end of March. But we have been told they anticipate this to change a bit, it may drop, so. And any drop, even by a couple of dollars, impacts our district a lot. So right now, we're looking at a general fund budget before virtual of four sixty-one point eight. You add in your anticipated virtual, and we're looking at a general fund budget next year of four hundred and sixty-four, almost four hundred and sixty-five million dollars. So an increase of twenty-one point five to the general fund. What does that mean for the rest of our operating budget? Because we have our LOB as well, and LOB is thirty-three percent of our general fund. So considering our general fund budget is going up to four hundred and sixty-four point nine, we anticipate our supplemental general fund to follow suit, up to a hundred and fifty-four point one million dollars. So in total, across two funds, looking at a estimated increase of twenty-eight point six million dollars for our operating budget next year. So before we get too excited, twenty-eight million dollars, it's a, it's a big number for our district. It's, it's decent, right? I, we're not going to go into too many weeds of our anticipated cost increases. This will be kind of on the, the agenda for our April time together. But every single year, we have to evaluate our cost increases. Transportation is a big one. And we'll evaluate that more in April, but we're anticipating a large cost increase for transportation this year. Utilities, insurance, software, making up our remaining budget deficit from this fiscal year and a wage package are all things that are going to take away from that new money. And so we're, we're still evaluating what these costs are going to be to that twenty-eight million dollar figure, and we'll have more information as we move along the budget process on, on those items. So let's jump into our remaining budget deficit. So we reported this six point two million dollar figure, I want to say in April last year, we got through phase one and phase two of budget reductions. And we reported back that we were going to stay as far away from classrooms as possible for, for phase three and future phase reductions. And so right now, we, we have a plan to make sure that this remaining six point two million dollar deficit has no impact on next year's budget. So we're looking at ten percent of mandatory administrative center FTE reductions across all divisions, ongoing class size reductions, consolidations of non-attendance center departments and prioritizing program spending. We're still working through the details of all the action items that come, but district administration has a plan to enact to make sure that, again, this six point two million dollars is not going to impact our, our spending next year.
And Addie, I just, to, to draw the line, because it's been a while, the, the number we were at last year, this time of year was forty-two million, if you remember that. We got that down to around, when the sped money came in at the end, it was around nine or ten, somewhere in that. And we said, we're going to pause at that point and we're going to come back next year for the rest. You'll notice that this is not nine or ten. And that's because, if you want to go into that, we've actualized more savings from some of those decisions we made last year than we thought we would. And so that's part of why, you may be like, well, this isn't, this isn't the number we thought we were going to need to cut. This is less than that.
Sure.
And Addie can explain that way better than I can.
Lots of revenue estimates changed, right? Mental health intervention team funding changed completely. Our assumption of what was going to happen in at-risk funds changed. You know, the, the direct certifications that we're carrying over from COVID timelines for students who, again, directly qualified for free and reduced lunches because of their Medicaid certification, students fell off. And so we anticipated losing some revenue for that. We didn't lose as much as we thought we were going to. Sped money was a definite, a big help last year. So we realized about nine million dollars of additional special education money. And that, that certainly helped our budget deficit position going into now being down to six point two million dollars to resolve.
Yeah, Melody?
So with the, looking at twenty-six, sorry, looking at the deficit being six million this year. So, right, because it says remaining.
That's right, yep.
We talked about that one, one point one million of special education funding, potentially from the ten that is in the budget currently. Would that, would we take that here?
So that one point two that we spoke about the other day, those, that estimate is going into next year's budget.
That's twenty.
Twenty-six.
Got it.
And we are trying not to impact our budget planning for fiscal year twenty-six with decisions that we needed to make as a, as a district leadership team.
Okay.
With the fiscal year twenty-five deficit. And if you recall, we are maintaining our budget by the use of some one-time funds, some cash essentially to help us. So we didn't have to cut the system all in one year, which is very challenging to do. I commend this board and the superintendent for getting as far as we did in one fiscal year. That was a tremendous lift, really remarkable work. But doing all forty-two million dollars in a year is very challenging. And so using some one-time cash was a, a great decision on this, this board's behalf. And so this year, we're, we're carrying ourselves through this year with some cash. We don't want to keep doing that in the future. And so we don't want to continue to make a future wage package pay for a budget deficit that we can resolve with other actions, so.
Okay.
So I want to jump into just a, a quick overview of our wage package history. And this is important to look at because when we've gotten new money in the past, it's been the directive of this board to invest in our staff through wages. We had some, some holes to fill with years of freezes on salaries. And so as we've gotten new funds, we've used them to dig out of that hole for salaries and then stay in line with, with CPI increases, right? So if we look back through the years, we got in, in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, our base state aid increase was four percent. We gave over six percent enra, raises that year. And that was to start to climb out of some of the, the steps that had been frozen for staff for years. And so we've consistently given more in raises in those first years of GAN and money coming in just to help catch staff back up. And we've done that year over year. Twenty, twenty to twenty-one, you see a zero percent base increase in a one point four percent package value. That was COVID. That was enrollment decline, right? And so when we're in declining enrollment and base state aid comes out and we say base state aid is four point three percent, Wichita Public Schools never realizes that full four point three percent because we're always juxtaposing that with a one to two percent enrollment decline, right? So that, that figure is always diluted a bit for us. And so unless we're constantly evaluating the size of our schools, the size of our, our class sizes, our staffing in general, our biggest cost center, right? That, that number is always diluted. But it's been a priority for us to invest those dollars in wages for our staff. And so in total, our wage packages over the last eight years have been thirty-seven point nine five percent. This math is not perfect because it's not compounding, and Lauren will appreciate that. I said that just for you. Don't come at me. And so we have done more than we've gotten in base state aid, even in spite of enrollment decline. So we want to continue that trajectory where we are not making the wage package, pick up the, the enrollment decline piece. And so I wanted to share the, the history of our wages with you all this evening. So to kind of wrap us up, we heard a lot tonight about our state legislation and how that's going to impact some of our budget planning. Some of it we know, and it's helpful to know early what's going to happen with special education funding. We still have so many other factors that are coming at us that we're trying to balance in our upcoming budget. Base state aid per pupil, will that number hold? Will it go down? Sped funding, what is that going to do this year and in future years? Property value caps. Sean mentioned some legislation, this is the, the session of property taxes, right? Are, are we going to cap a session valuations? Our state grants. Our Safe and Secure Schools grant was cut from the budget in the House. And so what's going to happen with our state grants? And how will we backfill the, the budget that those funds were helping to cover? Transportation contract, federal appropriations. The House passed a federal budget that has a significant cut to various title programs. And we have a huge federal budget in this district with high poverty. What are tariffs going to do? Union negotiations, insurance markets, you guys are getting the gist, gist, right? We're paying attention to so many factors that are coming at us that we are going to have to balance in that new money coming in in addition to all of those cost items that I mentioned before that we know we have coming every year. And so there's just lots of pressures on our budget, lots of pressures, pressures on that new funding coming in.
And before we get to the last slide, I do think it's easy for a bystander, I'm kind of editorializing here, but it's easy for a bystander to oversimplify this process and just say, well, just worry about one of those boxes, right? That's all you got to do, just figure that one out, right? All of those are a web, right? They're all intertwined and connected. And when one thing hap, you know, enrollment decline affects staffing challenges and that affects facility needs, right? Like they're, they're all interconnected. So it's much more complex than you can get through a soundbite or a text message or a blurb on a, on a flyer. It's, and I know you guys know that, so that's why I say I'm editorializing a little bit. Because it is a, it's a complex process that I, I take a lot of pride in. I think Addie and Susan before her do an amazing job of putting all the pieces together for us so it makes sense. And, and showing all the different factors and how they intersect. We don't always get it perfect, right? Decisions have to be made and you can judge those decisions as good or bad, but we're making the best decisions we have considering all the different factors, so.
So taking all of this into consideration and looking at our budget in totality, we still have pressing issues to address. And so I want to just discuss briefly next steps for funding our needs. Before I go into some of the details of some next steps we're taking as a district, there's still votes to be counted, so we're not making decisions either way on how the bond election went last Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. We need to plan either way and we need to start to deploy our plans regardless. And so mention some of those, those pressures and all those factors that are impacting our budget. And so what we'd like to do is establish a financial oversight committee that will help us to review the cash balances we have on hand, our incoming revenue streams and our future anticipated facilities needs specifically to make recommendations on how we're going to fund those needs. Right now, we don't have the, the specifics of the makeup of this committee, but we'd like to include district leadership, board of education members, independent financial advisors, our municipal finance, finance advisor, parents and students to help guide this work and help us figure out our path forward in funding those facilities needs. We do want to enact a focus group for constituents that cast a ballot on February twenty-fifth to help us get objective opinions on our education efforts to date and the facilities master plan. And so we have an independent moderator. It's a, a research group that will come in. So district administration will be very lightly, if at all, involved in this process. They'll be looking for constituents to participate in this on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth at six P M. So more details will come out about that as we have it. We'll also be sending out surveys to constituents. The timeline for that is looking to be March, Sunday, March thirtieth. We're looking for about three hundred and fifty responses. If you recall back to some of the survey work that Creative did, that number is essentially our safe margin for error. So that's the, the right number of responses to be able to apply an executive summary across essentially. And so we'll present those findings back to you all as we have them. And obviously, going through this process, we realize the need to continue to communicate both our budget and educate on our facilities needs. I commend all my colleagues because I think we've done so well for so long making the really, really hard look really, really easy, right? Making our facilities challenges and kind of sweeping them under the rug. Like we're going to, you know, we're going to do what we can do and we're going to do the best we can at it. And so just making sure that we're spending time communicating and educating on these issues that are very real, that are not going to stop coming at us, I think is a priority as we move forward. With that, I will finally pause for questions and discussion. With that, I will finally pause for questions and discussion.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay.
Wow.
Seen, oh, Stan?
So to summarize, we're looking at new monies. And I appreciate you every time, the first year, the first budget report. This is the base. Things can change before we finally adopt the budget in August, but this is a good base for this board to understand. We're looking at probably 28 million dollars worth of new money, minus 6 million dollars, unless we wanted to carry, try to carry for it, which I can't imagine we would. But, so that knocks it down to 22 million dollars of new monies for the new fiscal year. And that 28 million is iffy, because the legislature very likely could reduce it. So let's go down to 20 million dollars, just for a nice round number. 20 million dollars of new money. And that's where we generally, and I think it's about the only way you can do it, that's, that's where the, uh, raises come from. So the, the raises will come, if, you know, whatever we decide to do, it will be out of that 20 million. So that's why the operating budget part of our operations is, is not gonna be affected by the new monies.
Just to clarify, excuse me, that 28 million dollars, I, we did, if we did nothing, we would be taking our existing 6.2 million dollar deficit against that 28. But we have a plan. We have a plan to fix that, so it will not be a factor. But you're absolutely right. The, the new money is what we start to take into consideration for how much of that is for keeping lights on at the current levels, how much of that is for keeping transportation at its current service level, and then looking at remaining for the, for the wage package.
I appreciate clarifying that, because I made it sound like it was all about wages and, and the benefit package. But that is the money that we will have to spend for inflation. Like you said, keeping our transportation plan the same, all our operating situations. So I, I just, I just anticipated some questions that I may get from constituents that you're talking about pressures to the capital outlay part of our budget. This new dollars is not going to relieve any of that.
20 million dollars sounds like a big number. It's, it's small for us. So it won't relieve a ton of pressure in capital outlay.
I'd have to go back and look back, see what we thought new monies were gonna be in previous years. But this 20 million sounds fairly, you know, you hate to say it's small, like you said, but it actually, when you're looking at our total budget, it is a small number.
It, it's smaller than it has been in, in previous years.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie?
I guess I could've lowered my hand. I just wanted to give a caveat to Stan's thing of, well, you gotta take into account transportation, utilities, insurance costs goes up.
Julie has done this before.
Anyway, so, sorry, Stan.
No, no, I simplified it way too much, yes.
Is that it, Julie? Okay. Melody?
So we're, we're referring to this as new money. Where's the new money? Why are we calling it new money?
Uh, it's essentially the increase to the base state aid. So it's new money that's being funded by the legislature meeting its constitutional obligations to increase the base state aid amount. So we're going for, from 5378 to 5611. And so that change is what we refer to as new money for the district.
And we are not, um, did we use contingency fund? We did use contingency funds in our last budget.
We have budgeted cash to cover this, this year's.
For this year.
The deficit remaining in this year, yes.
Is it only for the projected 6 million?
Um, I think our budget was around eight, so, but as revenue estimates have, have been realized, that the number's lowered a bit.
And you're saying you have a plan. We have a plan.
We have a plan.
So it's possible that.
We won't have a budget deficit in fiscal year 26, essentially.
So it truly will be additional dollars.
Yes.
That's all I needed to understand. Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you. Noc?
What's the timeline for the financial oversight committee?
We'll probably wait to get some feedback from our survey results. And that way, our municipal advisor can start to run some numbers and, and get some pencil to paper for some details. We'll start to work on the makeup of the committee and hopefully shoot for something in April.
And then would the financial oversight committee just be focusing on facilities needs or needs in general?
It would be everything. So looking at all of our cash streams, all of our revenue sources to, to determine what we can do to fund our needs.
And then not, not a question, a guideline, I would like that financial oversight committee to be as community oriented as possible. So how do we meaningfully engage the community? And make sure, like, you know, it's not just a bunch of yes folks. But again, folks that are gonna ask the tough questions, but at the, at the end of the day, you know, that support public education, that support our strategic plan, to support our students, so.
I, I think you're hitting on the theme of the next few months, that what we'll be talking about, so right on.
Okay, very good. Any further questions? Okay. Addie, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. We appreciate that. Latona, next item?
Superintendent's report.
Excuse me. I don't have a whole lot for tonight, other than, just to reiterate a little bit of what Addie had talked about. You know, we, we still have, from what we're hearing from the election office, over 500 votes that are yet to be canvassed and decided. Those, those votes would probably have to tip in a direction other than the trend in order for it to change the results of the election. But, you know, at the point at which we had the press conference Tuesday, or Wednesday morning, you know, about 4% of the overall vote, 4 to 5% of the overall vote has come in since then. So I think it was prudent, because it's still a less than 1% margin, to kinda let all the votes be counted, let it, let it all pan out. I don't think there's a reason to rush into a lot of decisions, you know, right, right away to make a decision what comes next. Based on what, what Addie proposed, we will gather feedback and then share that feedback with, with you all and process that as a team. You know, I'm, I'm getting, you, you guys might be getting the same thing, but I'm getting several emails from community members of, of all kinda different persuasions with, I don't know if advice is the right word, but you know, here's what I'm hearing, here's what people are saying, here's what we think. So every, every, every challenge is an opportunity, and this is another opportunity to get better and do better for kids. We're not gonna quit doing great work. We're not gonna quit showing up for kids every day. But we will need to, to make more decisions down the road, and that's April, May, June, July, somewhere. Somewhere later on, we'll have more guidance on what we would recommend to the board to do. So I'm gonna stop there for my report.
Okay. Very good. Latona, next item?
New business and Board of Education requests.
Okay. Kelly?
So under new business, we wanted to make sure that we address something in the community, or something that's been going on in the past six weeks or so. When the new presidential administration took over in January, there was executive orders that were written about DEI, or diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that impacted us as a school district on February 14th. So in mid-February, Wichita Public Schools, along with all other public school districts, received a letter from the US Department of Education. This letter required WPS to remove certain words and phrases from board policies and the website, and possibly discontinue programs, initiatives, or practices. According to the letter, non-compliance would risk millions of dollars in federal funding that WPS currently receives. The deadline for making these changes was last Friday, February 28th. So we received the letter on the 14th, had two weeks, according to the letter, to make these changes. After many hours of discussion, review, and seeking further guidance from the state and federal levels, we determined it was, we needed to comply with the DOE guidance as best we could, given the tight turnaround. However, on Friday, February 28th, after 5:00 PM Central Standard Time, we received additional information from the US Department of Education that makes the initial letter unclear. We having spent the last three day, we have been spending the last three days reviewing the latest information to help determine the best path forward. And we've provided this information to you, the USD 259 Board of Education, so you can digest it and guide accordingly.
So as the Board of Education of the Wichita Public Schools, we have worked diligently and remain committed to providing an impactful educational experience to every student in our district, so that they can be future-ready. We know that actions speak louder than words, and we are committed to serving every single student. We are and will continue to be law-abiding, and by, we will be reviewing policies that the US Department of Education believes may be incongruent to their current guidance. We look forward to getting clarity from the Department of Education. Any other reports from the board? Okay, seeing none? Latona, next item? I move that the board go into executive session to discuss matters relating to employer/employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with a representative or representatives of the body or agency, to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest for 20 minutes. The executive session will include all the board members present and General Counsel Dan Lawrence and Superintendent Kelly Beilafeld. The open meeting will resume here in this boardroom at?
9:41.
Second.
Motion made by Diane, seconded by Stan. Motion carries 7-0. We are in executive session. The board is back from executive session. No action was taken. Latona, next item?
Adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Motion made by Stan, seconded by Kathy. Motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you.